Metro Cities Transportation, then tomorrow is the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Committee. Next week I'll be going to Granite Falls for the energy transition on the closing of the Granite Falls plant. And then I have upcoming meetings, because there are like two to four meetings a week on the reuse tax base, community engagement. Then the Regional Council of Mayors, and then also local economies, and then we have a National Small Cities Council meeting coming up next week. Next is Councilmember Doherty.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Johnson.
I attended night to night earlier this month. I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities Improving in the...
Service delivery.
Thank you. In which that relates to environmental policy as well as public safety. And then I attended the Parks Commission meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Ljunggren.
Attended the Lake Elmo Airport ribbon cutting for runway 1432, and attended the Planning Commission, and those three items that were at the Planning Commission that night are under new business.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Runk.
I attended the Middle St. Croix watershed meeting this month. We've updated the budget for the coming year to affect on us. The budget didn't actually change, but we did update the formula since the last time it had been done was 2007, and it resulted that we will pay an increase of like $20 hopefully next year for what we did this year. I also attended the CBB meeting this month. The major news out of there was that they were exploring their options, and they have decided to continue as a separate organization from the Chamber of Commerce. It does not mean they will not be cooperating with the Chamber of Commerce, but strictly they will be a separate board, have a separate board and a separate budget. And their next item will come out here, make sure you start looking to hire a director.
Okay. Thank you. Next our staff reports. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things. We had a successful 1999 event back on August 3rd. Thank you to everyone that showed up and visited us on the hottest day of the year. But everybody, we had a good turnout, and it was a lot of fun. We do appreciate that. Just update on our squad cars. I did hear back from the Ford dealership, they do have chips now, and they are going to build it. We should hear probably the middle of October. So what the anticipated date is, we order those in November. We did put out the job posting for the police officer vacancy that we will have available here in a couple of weeks, so deadline on that is September 15th. And then the consent agenda, we have the AEDs, just an update on that. We received six generous donations, and the plan is, once we get the actual units in, we'll have those parties that donated with the items and get good pictures and bring them all back here to the council for appreciation. Lastly, we've had no accidents at the New Roundabout in a row, so it's good.
I was an almost, though.
Some almost, yes.
Somebody didn't want to wait for me to get out of the circle.
It's going quite well.
You know what's gonna happen tomorrow.
It's going quite well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Next is Assistant Administrator Henske.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dennis Belkey, who lives at 1485 57th Street North, was chosen as the most recent recycling award winner.
Thank you. City Attorney Sannster.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One procedural item to note tonight, in general, City Administrator Eric Johnson has historically had an employment contract that hasn't had a provision about doing an annual performance review for him in August each year. And as the council is aware, and the general public is aware, if they've watched our meetings, that just a couple of months ago here, we renegotiated the term of Eric's contract. It was set to expire at the end of this year, and has now been extended for an additional two years. And based upon discussions with Eric, we decided that, you know, essentially the renegotiation of his contract and the vote of approval by the council, that included some increase in his pay and his fringe benefits, generally deemed a positive, you know, vote of confidence on the part of Eric, and we decided we'd just forego a performance evaluation this year, and wanted to make note of that on the record, so it'd be in the minutes, that that was the reason for that decision this year.
Thank you. And next we have our Park Programming Director, which is Annie Barris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As most of you know, my name is Annie, and I was honored to be this summer's Park Events Coordinator. In front of you, you have a presentation, and I would like to go over this with you. Oak Park Heights sponsored 30 events this summer. I wanted to put together a short presentation of those events. First we have here is Art in the Park. Thanks to Gina Zuli, this has always been a well-loved event. Statistics came from 97 community members out of approximately the 1,100 we serve this summer on Tuesdays, Art in the Park. Every Tuesday, I would pick a theme that had some type of learning behind it. For example, on the first day, we had do-it-yourself journals to promote summer writing. On Thursdays, I filled up the hockey rink at Breckie Park with toys. This was special because I really got to build relationships with some of the families who committed themselves to every Thursday. The boy on the bottom left was a great example of this. He would come every Thursday, and I would draw with chalk whatever was on his shirt. Bingo was a blast, and everybody loved the gift cards to local destinations. Pajama parties were held once a month. We had some great parties. Unfortunately, I would not continue this for next year as attendance was low. I would also not continue with Park Explorers. I do not believe the community is looking for activities on the weekend, as there's always so many other fun things to do around the community. Fairies in the Park was a huge hit for the community and for all ages. I couldn't be happier with the location and all the effort the community put into the houses. It started with us handing out 40 fairy house kits. 38 were returned, as well as others that the community just chose to contribute. The Magical Fairy Village was a reminder for me just how lucky I am to live here in the community that I do. To have a community come together and put something magical and inspiring together for anyone is truly remarkable. To have it out for two weeks and have every item respected and cared for is honorable. I feel proud of our community, and that's what I got out of this summer events. When all our community members have these events to go to, we thrive as a community, and I saw that firsthand. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for all the effort. I was there last Tuesday with my granddaughters, and I was just amazed at how many kids were there and how much fun they were having. I think the grandparents had more fun than the kids did. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Dana, is there any way we could get a copy and put this onto the website or something?
Absolutely, and also, absolutely, and also, Mayor and Council, Summer Park Program Coordinator Annie and I will work together to submit an address letter to it.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks.
Are there any other staff reports? So we'll move on to visitor public comments section. This is a time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda to come forward. So move on to the consent agenda, which is approved bills and investments, checks 68391 to 68436 for $236,297.32. Approved checks 68437 to 68468 for $1,075,842.51. Approved City Council minutes for July 26, 2022. Approved City Council work session notes from July 28, 2022. Approved resolution granting the application of Brad and Kim Gombold for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license at St. Croix Yacht Club on October 22, 2022. Approved Eureka Construction Incorporated fourth payment for Norrell Avenue improvements. Approved TA Schiffsky &amp; Sons Incorporated second payment for 2022 Millan Overlake project. Approved Stillwater Area High School special event permit for homecoming carnival with conditions. And approved resolution authorizing receipt of donations and directing the donation be used for purchase of new AEDs.
I'll move the consent agenda. Yes, present it.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Ljunggren, Eric.
Councilmember Doherty. Yes. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber. Yes, and we have no public hearings for tonight, so we'll move on to old business, which is to schedule a ribbon cutting event for, we have two of them, one for the 59th Street and Norrell Avenue, the Roundabout, they have the official opening for that, and then the Norwich Parkway crosswalk. And a suggestion is to have it on November 13th for staff.
November?
September.
Not in November, thank you. I don't want to rush the year. But September 13th at 5:00. Because of some conflicts, is there a way to do that at 4:30 and do the Norwich walk first, and then do the 59th and Norrell second after that? Would 4:30 work for everyone, is what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Yep.
It works for me. That's prior to the council meeting?
Prior to our council meeting. So we do 4:30 at the Norwich, right by Autumn Hills, and then move over to 59th by the Roundabout.
Yep.
And have staff send out the details. And then also to make sure that we invite Senator Housley, Representative Christensen, and those who helped to get the funding through, so that we can get that project done. So is there a motion to approve that time and date?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Ljunggren. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay. Then we'll move on to new business. And before we start this, there was a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and all of us as council members did watch the Planning Commission. Mike obviously was there in person, so we've all seen it, took notes, have staff reports. So as far as taking public testimony from everyone, we've heard the positives, we've heard the negatives. So we're going to keep this just to the discussion between the staff and the council, and if something pops up. And then I would ask, please, you know, keep your conversations, side conversations, to a minimum, because that was one thing that was hard for us to hear when we were trying to watch the Planning Commission back. So the first on here is the St. Croix Car Wash Conditional Use Permits and Design Guidelines, Site Plan Review at 14455 60th Street North, adjacent to tire pros. Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, this is a new building to be constructed, adjacent to tire probes for a car wash. The conditional use permits are for the car wash, and then for to allow no setback for the driveway on the east side of the site. Also with any of these, we have our site plan and design guideline, due to the guidelines review. The property is zone B2, General Business District, again requiring the conditional use permit. The building, new building will meet all the setback requirements of that district. As I said, there is a need for the conditional use permit for a bypass driveway around the building on the east side that's adjacent to the Speedway. Again, provides that bypass and for emergency vehicle access. Staff, as well as the Planning Commission, did not have an issue with that. Again, there's zero setback there at this point, and it just makes sense for the site planning to waive that 10-foot landscape upper. Access will come in from Omaha Avenue, and then loop north through the car wash, and then out on 60th Street North. A min dot access permit is required. Plenty of room for stacking, the way it's been designed with the entrance around the rear opposite 60th, and approximately, I estimate about 20 cars in both lanes for stacking, so there should be adequate space. And Min Dot was also concerned with any car wash, that the flow didn't go the opposite way and have the stacking on 60th. There is some overflow, plenty of room for parking. There's still some plans that the engineer needs to review for the grading range utilities, but that's subject to a condition, that that be resolved before building permit, obviously. Car vacuums, again, that's an issue that we review with any type of car wash facility. Since was the last one we had done, and we added a condition that the applicant, you know, is subject to a rear review of the conditional use permit if that has been issued. We're a long way from neighborhoods with this car wash, so we don't perceive that that being an issue with the sound levels. You know, the plan is pretty basic in terms of the lighting plans, the campus screening, landscaping, and so forth. All that's been reviewed, looks good. Design each plan is all confined with the ordinance, and we've done a review of, as well as the Planning Commission did review, the design guidelines had no issues with the overall design. So there's a resolution here packet with recommendation of the Planning Commission that indicated that it be approved, and with the conditions that are listed here. Any questions at this point?
We have a couple. With the exit going out onto 60th Street, I just remember when Mr. Car Wash was up off of Osgood during the winter, sometimes all that water would come out of the car wash, and there would be the ice that would start to build up. Is the applicant going to make sure that that does not happen coming out onto 60th Street? And then the other question is, I did read the letter and hear from Min Dot that they suggested not have another curb cut, and because there are so many curb cuts along 60th Street, that the suggestion be that they enter through tires pros. But I assume Min Dot will make the final call on that one?
Min Dot will make the final call.
Okay.
As far as the ice, I guess the public works can monitor that, if there's icing on that road, sand can be put up, and they can work with tire pros. It will be tire pros responsibility to make sure that there is an icy situation.
I just remember Mr. Car Wash, sometimes it'd be so icy on that hill, that people would actually slide out onto Osgood, and we don't want people sliding out onto 60th Street.
Luckily, we've got a pretty level situation there overall.
And hopefully they don't race out of the car wash.
Yeah.
Any questions for Scott? Any discussion at all? So is there a motion? Karen?
I said, "Looks good on my end."
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the car wash?
So moved. Second. One of the other.
Okay, we'll go in alphabetical order. Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Ljunggren, Eric.
Councilmember Doherty? Yes. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. Next is the Senior Housing Partners Valley Senior Services Alliance Plan Unit Development Concept Plan, 58th Street and Norwich Avenue, north side of 58th Street. Scott.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since we've seen bills come through with an application. It's always been anticipated in that area to the north of 58th Street. They've owned that property for some time, that there would be a development, additional planned new development review of that area, and that is now in front of us. This time, we're only dealing with the concept plan for the overall plan of development of that area. It would be a three-phase project consisting of 79-unit multiple-family housing building at the north end, adjacent to the Lowe's, a subject property, and two other phases, one of round stone senior living, the ceiling, and the other mixed-use senior living. Really, the two other phases really have now been planned in detail by Valley Seniors or Senior Housing Partners, but again, they have defined pretty, in some detail, the 79-unit multiple-family housing building. Since it's going to be in phases, we will do a general plan review of the details of that 79-unit multiple-family in the coming months. The last planned new development for this, review for this project was made of 2008. A comprehensive plan has consistently indicated that this would be a residential business transitional. Valley Seniors has always said that they would do possibly a mixture of office, maybe some senior living, and now with this market rate essentially apartment building, it's all consistent with the current plan. Property is zoned B4, Limited Business District, multiple family development is done with the conditional use permit. Again, we're not reviewing the building, 79-unit building in detail, but it'll be about 49 feet, 3 inches, and so fairly significant building at that location. Subdivision, it was noted that in 2008, we had approved a preliminary final plat for what was called Bellows, I mean, second edition. Something felt there was cracks, it was never filed, so it's still in outlot status, but as part of general plan, they will do a new plat, and this is probably good, because it'll fit their current development plans, depending on how they want to subdivide that property. Heart dedication connection fees, something again, we'll deal with the general plan, and so far, the determination has been made that everything was paid for south of 58th Street, not for the north of 58th Street. We're continuing to research on that, but we'll have that resolved as we look at the general plan for this. Project density open space, zoning ordinance has density requirements, and again, this is well within at least the first phase of the density requirements of the zoning. Setbacks need to the requirements with that first phase, that first apartment building. Minimum floor area, we do have a requirement, efficiency in one-bedroom units, need to be 600 square feet. They do have some units that they're looking at 440 square feet. They're called ALCOV units, you'll see them in their four plans. Planning Commission discussed that a bit, I don't think there's an issue with that, but that's something that we want to continue discussions with the applicants on as we look at general plan. And again, they have some specific reasons why they want to do units that size, and that is something that we look at as part of the planning development. And if there's specific conditions on it, so we will pull those on. Proposed street access, they'll continue with the same street access with this first phase upon development. Other phases, there would be an access provided at Norwich Avenue. The preliminary trail sidewalk plan shows interconnections throughout, which is positive. Again, the detail items are more of a general plan, and will, those will be addressed. One of the things also we talked about is parking, they have a lot of addition parking that they're planning, and one of the things we're looking at with the applicants is maybe showing proof of parking, and again, issue with large expanses of parking lots, and we have a lot of those along Merrick Highway 36, is that if there's heat mitigation, heat island mitigation, then we can do, or specifically, proof of parking, I think is one way to deal with that, so they don't build a large number of stalls that may not be used, are going to contribute to that.
Can you land bike racks in for the final?
Yes. And so with that, there is a resolution. The recommendation of the Planning Commission was favorable for this concept plan, and the conditions are listed in the resolution. We have a couple members of the Planning Commission, Jen and Taylor are here also. Any questions?
You did a good job at the Planning Commission. Any questions for Scott?
What we're approving tonight is just the general plan?
It's just the concept.
The concept.
The concept. And then the concept is that they will be doing three separate phases, is that?
That is, that is my understanding. You know, who knows, they may decide to do the other two buildings in just a second phase. Again, they have not determined the details of exactly what those buildings look, but that'll be down the road, just like we did the rest of the Bellows Development, done.
Any other questions for Scott?
No, I don't. I do have some questions, but I think as we're going through the general plan, those are gonna, those are gonna come out, so the overall master plan, I think, looks good.
That was the first thing I thought, where's the bike rack, so. Is there a motion to approve, or if there's no other questions?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Ljunggren, second by Councilmember Runk.
Eric?
Councilmember Doherty? Yes. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. Next is Oak Park Heights Comprehensive Plan Amendment for 5676 Oak Green Avenue North, Jamie Junker, applicant representing JK and K Group, LOP. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The minus classification of this property is low-density residential in Conference of Plan 2018. The applicant is considering, at least at this point, this literally two buildings, each three stories, with a possible total of 36 condo units. The low-density residential classification is not consistent with that proposed density, so the applicant has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment to change that classification to high-density residential. The details of the project are not to be considered at this time. Again, it's only the maintenance classification. We, that was Mr. Junker and his team, and felt that the best way to approach this, because it was a departure from our comprehensive plan that was just updated in 2018, through about 2020, that we go through that step before we invest a lot more time, money, and resources in a whole plan. So we thought this was a good way to transition this, and see if there's interest in the community to change the comprehensive plan. Property is currently zoned open space conservation, and again, it would need to be rezoned likely to an R3, our multiple-family district, for a project like this to proceed. Athentist has provided background information, and also have held four meetings, two each on May 17, May 25, to introduce the project. I believe you found a summary of those meetings as part of your, as part of your package. The Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing for August 11 meeting, and recommended denial, unanimous recommendation, and the comprehensive plan then requires a 45th vote of the City Council to proceed. As I indicated, it's currently designated in the comp plan as low-density. Previous comp plan, the 2008 plan, closed land use map designated as median-density residential. Subject property is 2.9 acres in size.
And again, some of that includes the way the area was originally plotted, or at least was, the properties were, lines were drawn. A portion of that, 2.9 acres, is in Oak Green Avenue right away. So we don't have a survey, so we don't have exactly how much developed of land to approach some density requirements. But as I said to the Planning Commission, when we looked at some of these higher-density developments, we did not necessarily look at the higher end of the density allowances within the comp plan, but reverted back to the zoning ordinance. So when we did Oak Park Senior Living Villas, Bellows Landing, again, we're looking more at the zoning density. We do make a note, I do make a note in the report and the resolution, that the 36 units would exceed those density allowances based upon the size of the lot. But again, I think that's something that if the council decides to move forward with a high-density designation, they would have to take a look at if there's a higher end to that. So I know the applicant had some issues with that, but I wanted to point out that in doing more research, again, we use more the zoning density. And in terms of that, the zoning densities were fine as far as the development proposed. When the City Council and Planning Commission 2018 looked at this property, and this subject property was specifically called out in the comp plan on page 75, as an infill development that would accommodate six family, six single-family units. The thought was with the Palmer Station that was being developed at the same time as we're doing the comp plan, that 58th Street, Oak Park Boulevard, made a good transition, transition between that lower-density development and then the higher-density to the north with the Noldy, Noldy development, the Oak Park Villas, I should say. So there was a, you know, really, there was some discussion and a comfort level with, again, taking that from mid-density to low-density for land use for the subject property. And so I go through, and I talk about that in the resolution, as well as in the report, the reasons why that change was made. Land use consistency with established single-family neighborhoods to the south.
Land use consistency with established single-family neighborhoods to the south, and again, that transition, transition period or point. Traffic concerns with the low-density development, with more than a low-density development to the corner 58th and Oak Green Avenue. Again, recognize that that intersection sees high volumes at certain times, there's backups. It was felt that it was better that that was low-density, especially where your access points have to be fairly close to the intersection, just because of the way the property is, is laid out, that the lower-density made more sense. And then desire to add more single-family development to the city. We don't have really any additional land for single-family development, and this is felt as a, as a good area for, again, promotion of probably up to six, six homes for, for single-family purposes. So that is the reason why I think the city made a very strong commitment to design this area that way. And as I say in the report too, the city has a lot of discretion in how it determines what its land use is in the community. The Met Council really overall looks at general community densities, traffic and so forth. They're not telling us yet, this 2.26 acres needs to be low-density or high-density. That is really up to the community. And the state of Minnesota, the Met Council allows us to make those determinations. A few things, I did pull out what I thought was relevant in the comp plan related to low-density, high-density development, and that's the points that I made in my report, such things as preserving small-town character. Felt that there is, with this as low-density, it again preserved more the low, the, the small-town character of that neighborhood. The policies of the land use plan talk about prevent over-intensification of land use. I guess with looking at all the elements of this, in my opinion, and I think the planning commission agreed, that going up to 24, 36 units, high-density development would be an over-intensification of that, of that area. Let me see, don't want to repeat myself. Again, there's, I didn't mention the 150-foot buffer that was set aside a number of years ago with Bowles Landing to provide that transition also, or open area in that area. But it was never intended that that would be the point at which that transition from, from low-density to high-density would be. The intent was always mid-density or now low-density development in that area. One of the residential land use policies talks about concentrations of multiple-family dwellings and apartments in the city. Again, you know, land use compatibility, traffic and other, other issues are, are things that I believe made us stop and pause and look at this area as being more appropriate for low-density. So I won't drone on anymore about that. But you'll find a resolution in your packet that talks about, again, the reasoning why in 2018, we, we designated this area the way that we did. And, and again, the planning commission agreed unanimously with the, with staff on this, that the designation remain as low-density and not be changed at this time. So any questions?
Just not questions, but more statements. The council was very thoughtful, going back probably 15 years regarding this particular property. As Bowles was being developed, we were seeing, you know, more density coming, and then when Oak Park Senior Living came in, was to try and have a delineation so that this is the higher density, this is the lower density. And also the issues with on 58th Street with having curb cuts. You know, with Oak Park Senior Living, we had them make their entrance and entrances off of Nova Scotia or different areas. This particular area, the curb cuts are just way too close to the intersection. And granted, the speed, in my opinion, is too high. I heard at the meeting that supposedly I wanted to raise the speed. I did not want to raise the speed, I want it lowered. But in the afternoon, you've got the buses, the school buses, you've got people coming and going, and there's a lot of traffic. And I think the curb cuts for this is just too much, too much activity at that particular intersection. Low-density makes much more sense. And we, a couple of years ago, we looked at one that had, I think, 13 units or 12 units in it, and that even seemed too high. So I'm in favor of leaving this as low-density, and when the right development comes along, it'll present itself.
And as far as development, I, I think it's always been assumed that, you know, there's 13 units in Palmer Station off of one cul-de-sac, serves that very well. You would have one access, obviously, just for maybe a six or seven-unit single-family development. So again, placement of that is important in terms of traffic, but less trips per day, obviously, with a low-density development than a higher 24 or 36-unit development.
And similarly with Palmer Station, when that was developed, was not to have that curb cut come out onto Oak Green, that it comes out on, out there by Oak Park Boulevard. So, which is much slower coming through here, or it should be. But I'm not in favor of allowing a, a change to this. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions?
I guess I would agree, Mayor. Just from the standpoint of, you know, we, we had the public process for the comp plan in 2018. We've looked at it, you know, there was a process, there was a public process for that. We went through that, and I think we did our due diligence to look at, you know, what kind of development should be at that site and, and therefore, yeah, I'm, I'm opposed as well to make any change to the comp plan.
Any other comments? Chuck?
No, I mean, I think I agree with what's been said. I mean, as part of the comp plan group, and this is what we wanted to do.
Is there a motion?
I want, I want to make a comment. Because I think there were a few things that, at one point, it was that I supposedly supported it. I'm like, no, I didn't say that. I said, I think you misconstrued a number of things. The fact that, as Scott mentioned, the idea between, that's that 58th Street was the dividing line between the high-density and lower-density. And as far as the linear park or the buffer zone, I said, I guess I always looked at that and said that was, I looked at it and said it was kind of a protection for the houses on 56th Street and Novak. And the fact that it provided a buffer with the trees to try and reduce the noise from 58th Street traffic. And I think that was the problem, I, when I met with him and I talked about it, was the fact that he kept talking about how the cars were going to come in and this, and I'm like, basically, you're going to have all these cars coming into these, into your garages in the, through the backyard of the neighbors. And so I wanted to make clear that, no, I, I told him, I said, we'd have to go through, you know, he was welcome to go through the process, and we talked about how, we, how, what the process was. And I think that's all we've done, is we've gone through the process and unlike what he said the other night, where he commented that this was kind of like the comp plan 2022 version, no. We have the comp plan from the 2018, and you want to change that, and you need us to provide justification. I don't think there was any justification there. I think the, we made the proper decision when we decided to designate this as low-density.
And we do have some of the amendments back and forth. The comp, comp plan gets reviewed every 10 years, so it'll be reviewed again in 2028. Life changes, who knows what it'll be then, but for now, is what it is.
The only thing I'd like to add is the comment about it being a rubber stamp.
Oh, I didn't like that one either.
I think it, it's really important to note that the work that our planning commissioners did, who are in the room, and the council did, watching the planning commission's public hearing, reading everything that was submitted, responding to public comments, all of the public coming to give their opinion, that is far from a rubber stamp.
Here's my notes from watching all of you on TV. Who said what? So we were paying attention.
And the copies of the emails that we had that went back and forth between people.
Yes, we have your letters and emails.
And we all met with, had phone calls with the developer. I think my phone call was in April, before any staff meeting, he mentioned in that public hearing. So this has been a long process with a lot of public engagement and council time, staff time, planning commission time. And so that statement, I think, needs to be to bed.
Well, it's obviously, it's not going to be rubber stamped. So is there a motion?
I move acceptance, or the resolution to deny.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Lutgeren. Any further discussion? Eric?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutgeren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. Oops, I forgot to say that. Don't clap.
But it's good to see all these people here.
Yeah. There's a lot.
Come on back.
Next is other council items or announcements.
I think we have one announcement that, about the walk-run.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. The City Oak Park Heights has a second annual walk event going on right now, started August 20th through the 31st. There are two routes available, 5K to 10K. There's no fee to participate, no pre-registration needed. Just go to our website.
Download the, or print out the maps, go do your walk-run during that time period, submit your response that you did it, and it enters you into what a prize. It's a great way to see the city trails and parks.
I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time again, for your participation, your emails, your comments, and your engagement. So thank you very much for attending tonight. And next is their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Lutgeren. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.